I want to welcome everybody to the January of two thousand twenty-one Planning Board meeting. Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is standing one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just. First on the agenda tonight, we have the approval of the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Uh, I have a couple on the second page. The last paragraph. The last sentence where it says, Mr. Thompson and his son David were on the call. Mr. Thompson was not on the call, and his son's name is Robert Junior. So the sentence should say, Robert Thompson Junior was on the call. And you have to remove Mr. Thompson and his, okay? You there, Rosemary?
Yep, I got it, I have it.
Okay, on the next page. On the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph. First sentence. Where it says, it is impossible to fix the wall with the lattice as installed. It should say, it is impossible to inspect the wall with lattice as installed. So remove the word fix and insert the word inspect. On the same page, one, two, three, four. Seventh paragraph. You have to remove on the third sentence. It says, he wanted to know where the fill came from and how did it get there? That's in a different paragraph. That whole sentence should be removed. That's, that is in a different paragraph. On the next sentence, uh, next paragraph. Where it says, village engineer asked how high the retaining wall would be. He asked, the village engineer Palmer asked how high the proposed fence would be. So just remove retaining wall and say proposed fence.
What page are you on?
I'm on the same page. That the last correction was made, the next paragraph. Do you see where we are?
No.
Okay, so on page two. On the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eighth paragraph, um, yeah, eighth paragraph. It's almost in the middle of the page.
Yeah.
Where it says, village engineer Palmer asked how high the retaining wall would be. Remove retaining wall and insert proposed fence. Do you see that?
Uh, that's page three, isn't it?
That is correct, page three. Could you, in the future, could you put the page numbers on the pages?
I'm trying. I'm learning. I will.
Do you see that correction?
Okay, what was that again?
Okay, so on page three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight paragraph.
Yep.
Where it says, village engineer Palmer asked how high the retaining wall would be. Insert proposed fence where retaining wall is.
Okay.
Okay? And two paragraphs after that. Where it says, the steep slopes law was enacted because there were no restrictions. You have to finish the sentence where no restrictions on modifying steep slopes. Do you have that?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any additions, corrections?
The only thing I, uh, Sean, was when, um, the paragraph that Mr. Thompson and his son David. Um, I asked Mr. Thompson what he wanted.
Mr. Thompson wasn't there. His son was there.
Okay, so I asked what they wanted, um, in addition to possibly asking who they contacted.
So how would you like that to read? You said, when Mr. Thompson reached out to the village with his concerns, a stop work order was issued. So how would you?
All right, before that, what I did was I asked him what they wanted or what he wanted and.
So tell Rosemary how you would like to insert it into the minutes.
Rosemary, just add on to contacted anyone and what he wanted.
Okay.
That's all.
Did he answer you?
Well, the next, the thing they expressed their concerns on the aesthetics of the wall and if the wall is structurally sound and secure, sound and safe. So yes.
Okay.
Anything else? So can I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Make a motion, we accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who made the second?
Jeff Vialla.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, we have, uh, this, uh, decision on the construction of a modular concrete retaining wall for property at two twenty-six Tate Avenue. If you, uh, remember last month, we closed a public hearing. And we had three different options. And I had asked everybody to come up with their idea so we can discuss them today. As well as I asked everybody if they, uh, had an opportunity to view the wall. Uh, talk to Mr. Thompson or talk to Mr. Calabro. So I wanted to afford you guys the opportunity to do a little bit more inspections before, uh, we had a, came to an opinion of what to do with this. Uh, so, uh, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Calabro or his representatives? And this is for the board members because we did close the public hearing. So this will be a discussion amongst the board members and we'll ask, uh, any of the applicants or our consultants, uh, if we want to discuss it further. So does anybody have any questions for Mr. Calabro? No. Okay, so you guys can unmute yourself, the planning board members. And I'd like to discuss the options that we had last month. Last month, we talked about either approving the plan as it was afforded to us or given to us to modify the plan or to have the plan totally, have the construction totally removed. So I would like, uh, your guys' discussion, ideas of what you think we should do. Uh, I believe that you received the document from Stephanie, if you remember last month, at the end of the public hearing. We had asked Stephanie to write a memo on the legal interpretation of our code as well as some other state laws. Because you know that there was an issue with the village authorizing that construction, even though it was authorized, uh, basically illegally in violation of our code. There are several parts of the code that were violated. So what, what, feel free to just, to say anything you want. What are some of your guys' ideas?
Sean, I have a question. If removing one block, would that bring it to code?
It'll bring it very close to the code, yeah. Right now, the, the drawing shows that it's supposed to be seven feet, six inches. Our code specifies six feet. So removing that twenty-four inch block should bring it right around. I didn't go out and measure it, but removing that one block would bring it within what we could say would be the six feet. You know, give or take a few inches here and there. Is that correct, Stephanie? Or George, I should say?
Yeah, that's correct.
The other caveat to this is, uh, the steep slopes. Uh, but when we first talked about the project, there were no, uh, steep slopes uh, noticed on the original drawing. Uh, you know, our code has different, different criteria for fifteen to thirty percent, over thirty percent. There are certain criteria we, we have to go by when allowing a disturbance of a greater than thirty percent grade. So that was the other caveat to, to this issue. That wasn't previously addressed prior to the start of construction. John, you have anything or?
I have something. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just, I, I mean, I remember last time when I said I had seen the wall, I thought maybe we could terrace it a little bit more so that you wouldn't have the seven foot six wall. So whether you put a wall at the lower side on Mr. Thompson's property or remove the block and brought it one layer of block or two layers of block closer to Mr. Calabro's property.
Well, terracing the wall would still make the total wall height the same height. So that doesn't alleviate the code violation. It would alleviate some aesthetic value. And, uh, some might say structural stability, but Mr. CRC, uh, says that the design as is will suffice. So, but by terracing the wall, I don't think we alleviate our six foot height constraint.
Well, what if the terrace areas were ten foot spaced from each other? So if one wall was ten foot back from the other, I mean, what's the difference between that and a fence?
Well, right now, there's forty, there's, uh, four blocks, uh, it would be terrace back forty feet. That would be in the middle of his property.
No, no, I'm not saying, but if you had a, a four foot wall and a four foot wall ten feet apart. So overall be an eight foot difference from Mr. Thompson's property, but it would be in two four foot walls versus one eight foot wall.
What do you think about that, George?
Uh, I would say that's, it's feasible, um, but I'm not sure. I guess the aesthetics becomes the issue too. So if you put the first wall, the lower wall, you'd want that to be aesthetic, a nice aesthetic wall. So you wouldn't put like lattice in front of that wall. So that would have to be some type of segmental block wall. And then the wall behind it, uh, four feet tall, that would, that would certainly break up the massing and, and make it seem less looming and, uh, you know, you know, so large against the, uh, what the neighbor sees from the backyard. So.
And if they're terraced, can't you put a planting on the, the level to hide the height of the second wall that you're not looking at that?
Yeah, sure, you can. Yeah, ten feet is, is a typical setback from a side yard or anywhere where you, you can get a good root structure for any kind of planting to grow there, uh, to grow arborvitae or any kind of plants that could, uh, screen the wall.
Will he be able, I have a question. Will he be able to get to that terrace ten foot from his property? How is he going to do that? Is he gonna do it by ladder?
Oh, well, two, if you had two, two, four foot walls is, um, you could go from one to the other. But you're right, that would kind of, that would be somewhat of a difficulty for him to maintain.
Yeah, I mean, it's great to say, you know, they can landscape it if they put trees in, but weeds grow. So I'm just looking at, if you're not going to trespass on Mr. Thompson's property and if in the event that he does sell it, um, it still has, it should still be somewhat aesthetically pleasing to whoever would buy it.
Stephanie, will that, will we still be within our, uh, the legal constructs by moving it, uh, a terrace wall ten feet?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Sean, Sean, can I, can I interject for just one second, please?
Give my guess.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, David Garcia, how are you? Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Um, I, you know, I, I hear what the, what the board is saying and I understand the direction in which it's going. However, I would ask the board to just consider, um, you know, the, the cost for, you know, doing something like this. Um, and I, I don't want to be terribly cavalier with Mr. Calabro's money. Um, but it's not simply an issue of just, you know, you get a couple of guys in there, they spend the day and then you've, you know, you've created this, this terracing. I mean, this requires heavy equipment. I mean, these blocks are, I, I, I mean, they weigh as much as a car. Uh, so, you know, this kind of work is, you know, um, significant. So I would, I would ask that the board consider that in terms of, and um, as, as Eileen indicated, you know, getting, you know, getting to that bottom terrace creates another issue, creates a whole, you know, so it opens up another can of worms.
I appreciate that, Mr. Garcia, but there again, we're trying to come up with a solution to something that shouldn't have been built to begin with. So we're not, we're, we're just coming up with ideas.
I hear you.
I don't want, I try not to operate in a vacuum because I have my own opinion, but, you know, it's, it's not a dictatorship. You know what I mean?
I understand.
So we're just coming up with different ideas to, uh, just, you know, you guys could choose.
Uh, I, I'd like to add to that. It's actually a difficulty now. Now that it's six feet high, he can't get to the, in front of his wall right now. It's, uh, it's not that easy. So it's, it's an issue right now. Forget about when you terrace it, make it two four foot walls. Right now, it's an issue.
Well, but as it is now, um, the, the wall is on his property. He, he has the capacity or the ability to walk around the wall, um, and get in front of it and still be on his property.
Yeah, he's got maybe two or three feet on each side. That's about it.
Yeah, it's not much according to the drawings. So we had this discussion last month where, uh, we, we had asked and Mr. Calabro had agreed to have somebody stake it out so we can notice the markings. Cause if you remember some of my comments last month where that there was, uh, some erosion that was going down into the neighbor's property and that there was a fence that was put up in between two saplings to hold back some of the debris that was coming down. And there was a discussion whether it was Mr. Calabro's issue or the neighbor's issue. So that's where this issue of staking came out. And he had mentioned that his previous surveyor hadn't done that and that he was going to do that to help us, uh, get some, uh, demarcation up. So it was, do you know if that was completed or not?
Well, my surveyor, um, I don't know, he's just been too busy or, or what he's been doing to, uh, finish taking out the property. Uh, but in the meantime, I was able to have my landscape designer draft up a couple of things, submitted to the board members. Um, it got in there today. It was kind of late notice. I don't know if anybody received it or not. Um, just to bring up a couple of ideas and what we could do with the property. Cause in front of, in front of the wall, I say on Tompkins side of the wall, I have, you know, it's like six feet on one corner and, you know, maybe three feet on the other corner. Uh, but I have room to work with before even getting onto his property. Um, right now, there's a, there's a shed, uh, in the way. Uh, someone's been working with the village to try to get the shed removed. So I care so he can get the proper tools, equipment in there to, you know, get in front of the wall and, and come up with, you know, however many feet in front of the wall. I don't have ten feet to come back, but I am, I do have enough room to, to terrace it a little bit.
Look, where that shed is, I believe that's where George says there's about two or three feet. Is that correct? Between that and the neighbor's property?
So on the, if you're in.
It's actually, it's actually over six feet. That shed encroaches over six feet onto, onto Calabro's property.
I think we got off a little off track. I still wanted to hear some more about some of the board members. Uh, you got, what do you got, Eileen? Anything?
No, I was, I was going, I was gonna say what Jennifer said, um, in regards to the terracing. So she elaborated and we moved it back for ten feet and whatever. So.
Can I just interject for a minute, Sean?
Yes.
Cause I just want you to be aware that by code, he's allowed to have six feet as long as it's engineered properly. And his, his engineer is saying that it is. And notwithstanding the steep slopes issues, because I don't know what he did or what disturbance was or wasn't had. But when you talk about terracing and bringing it down to four feet and another four feet, um, he's allowed to have six feet.
Okay.
What's the, Brian, do you know what is the space between the front wall that is on Mr. Thompson's side of the property and the wall just built? There's, what is the distance between those two walls?
Um, it's noticed at an angle. So there's, say, six feet on one side. And it comes back to, you know, like maybe two or, I'd say probably three feet on the other side. So the shed side, six feet.
So even if that lower wall couldn't be four feet, it could be, I, I, I think it's maybe twenty-four inches now. I, I don't know. I could step up there pretty easily. Uh, I don't know what it is off the grade from Mr. Thompson's, but if you could do, cause I guess you can't get ten feet back from the, from his wall, right? So we don't have ten feet. So I guess you can't go any more than six feet. So you're probably gonna have to, I would, what, what about the top level block? Like what would you say about having to lower that and bring it back or something closer to your proper line? I mean, what, what do you feel about that?
More interested in pulling the top row back two feet or however many feet. So if the, so if we go on the, the base area where Tompkins property is, that six feet of property that's mine, if I put a, say, a wall up there and that leaves some landscaping between the two walls. Then it comes up, you know, how, like four feet, then the wall steps back of whatever, say, foot and a half, two feet back. And then, you know, at least that's all, it's all tiered down. Then what we can do is come up with an agreement on the location of a fence and the height of a fence.
But overall, it'd still be seven, it would be seven and a half feet in less than ten feet. So I guess that's still the struggle, right? So we still need to get.
The height, yeah, that's, that's, well, Stephanie said it could be six feet from.
Correct, six feet, yes.
So instead of ten feet.
Well, I guess, I guess the scenario is, are we, are you, are you, is the height of the wall counted from the bottom of the base block? Or is the height of the wall counted from the, the dirt that's in front of it? The earth that's in front of it?
George, uh, I think, I think you, uh, were able to answer that question in the last month that I believe that you ran into the same issue on the zoning board. So could you give us the interpretation, please?
Yeah, so that, uh, it is the dirt in front of it. That's what you measure from.
Okay, so the majority of the wall is three blocks high. That's six feet.
Okay.
So the, the first row, so that, of that, of the three row side is, have six inches of dirt in front of it. So that's only five and a half feet high. Um, there is a, there are one corner, four blocks, that's eight feet, was be, would be behind the shed. And that whole first course is completely covered. So even at, if you're going by the dirt, it's four. I'm not even, I'm at six feet. If, if you're counting the dirt in front of the block, I'm no higher than six feet. If you're counting, if you're looking down at it from Mr. Tompkins property, before you step up to that, whatever, that, the shrubs he has there, before you step up onto that, it's different. So if I'm standing down at Mr. Tompkins property, that's, you're talking about two, two different things. So if it's the dirt in front of the wall, the earth in front of the wall, then I'm, I'm, I'm within that six feet that you guys are asking for.
Does anybody, did anybody go and take any measurements? I, I, I'm, I'm sure you did, Mr. Calabro. Mr. Cook, I see you, you look like you wanted to say something.
I think we measured seven foot six from the dirt to the top of the block.
That's what you measured?
Uh, but again, you know.
No, I understand. And that's what the drawings show.
Maybe added more dirt on the bottom.
Maybe different. That, that was quite, quite a while ago that we measured.
And we had a, if you remember, we had an issue with there only being, uh, a couple of feet in front of the foundation, which was already terraced onto the other property. So that, that was a little bit of an issue when we're talking about measurements and foundations. But we would hate for you to go there and take something out or fill something in there to get your six foot height measurement. You know, so what?
You know, the scenario, you know, when it came, you know, it's like looking at, you know, somebody's project and they're stopped in the middle of it. It looks like crap. You know, so, you know, so I was stopped in the middle of a project that, you know, I wasn't allowed to finish it. You know, I, you know, I, I reached out to Mr. Tompkins plenty of times, you know, it's, you know, he's upset what happened after the fact, but he wasn't willing to work with me before the fact. So I, you know, I can't say anything on his behalf. But, you know, like you stopped me in the, you stopped me in the middle of it. They complained about how it looked. You know, then everything after that was kind of just making it look better because it was aesthetically, it wasn't pleasing to a couple of people. But I wasn't even allowed to finish it, you know?
Well, math doesn't lie, Mr. Calabro. If it's seven feet, it's seven feet. You know, the law says six feet. We're just trying, we're, I'm just trying to come up with some different ideas so that, so that the, it can be mitigated.
I don't want to just stick it to anybody. I'm totally open to. Um, but, but if we're talking about the, the height of the wall from the, from the, from the earth on the bottom to the top of the wall, if need that to be six foot, and if I can do, if I can tier it in front of that wall and if I can come under that six foot mark, then, you know, I think that's, that is one option.
Uh, Eileen, it looked like you wanted to say something. Tracy?
No.
Leave the seven six.
Yeah, but it's too close.
Mr. Cook, do you have something to add or what would you?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm just concerned, the, the talk about, uh, terracing the wall to take the pressure off the lowest wall. The height of that wall, whether it be two feet, four feet, six feet, in order to not have the second wall and pressure to it, onto it, it has to be, if it's four foot wall, you have to be four feet back and then you could start the second wall. That, that would be the, uh, geometry of how one wall doesn't bear the weight down to the other wall.
Yeah, we were talking about moving it six feet. That was the, not four feet, it was six feet.
Right. But, uh, Mr. Calabrio was saying he only wanted to go back a foot and a half or two feet.
No, the code doesn't allow that. We, we had, we had talked about ten feet and then Stephanie said the code allows it to be terraced six feet and still not include the height requirement. So if you go up four feet, six feet, and then four feet. But that might change Mr. CRC's design because Mr. CRC designed it as a gravity wall. So removing that, that weight might remove the load bearing characteristics of the lower foundation. Because now you've reduced it by half of what's gonna keep it in place.
Okay, Sean, can I, can I jump in there, jump into it for just one second? I think what Stephanie was referring to, that six foot, uh, measurement was the height. That was, that was not the setback, but the height.
No.
That she was referring to.
Get confused, okay? And when Jennifer brought up the terracing aspect, she had mentioned ten feet because that's what the code is for fencing. Stephanie says that it only has to be six feet horizontal and then four feet vertical. So that's what the reduction was. That does not have to meet the six foot height requirement because it's terraced six feet in. Do you understand what I mean?
Wait, can I clarify?
Yes, Stephanie.
Okay, thank you. What the code says is you, you can have six feet, right? So if you want to put, you know, a fence on top of a wall, right, it can, combined can only be six feet. If you want to put a fence away from your wall and it wants to exceed the six feet, it has to be ten feet away. And we're interchanging walls with fences because, I mean, we've now defined it in the code. But before, there's a sentence that says, you know, walls, shrubs, whatever, and they clump it together. So if you wanted to make, um, the wall, for example, you know, four feet and then you want another four feet, that exceeds the, the six foot requirement. You don't have to be ten feet away. But I'm confused and I think we need the engineers. Why are we talking about terracing again rather than just reducing this to six feet and leaving it?
Well, that was Jennifer's suggestion as a, as a way to alleviate the height requirement. Instead of just removing portions of it, we could terrace it and still allow him to have the level yard. But, uh, change the aesthetic values of it and put some plantings in front of the, the four foot section and the other four foot section. So it looks almost natural as it was before. Because before it was a steady thirty percent grade with foliage on it.
Okay, I get it, but you're still reducing the size of the wall that's already in place. Right, yeah.
Correct. And so I think that was Stephanie, I, I think what Stephanie was, is talking about is simply, as opposed to doing the terracing, um, you know, removing the, the one course and potentially reducing the one course so that we, we meet that six foot as opposed to.
That was gonna be, that was gonna be another option I was gonna ask the other members to talk about. But we kind of got bogged down in one option and we could discuss the other options. Okay. Now I want to give you guys all the options you choose from. You know, instead of debating each portion as we go through.
Okay.
All right? Uh, Jeff, do you have anything else? You, you want to bring up anything or?
So that would be removing the top block, setting that top block back ten feet from the top of the wall.
Or just remove the entire first cor, uh, last course. Bring that entire wall to six feet and then grade it back. If we grade it back, we won't have to worry about the thirty percent grade. Cause the thirty percent grade was a disruption of the steep slope. If we can bring that disrupt, this, uh, the, uh,
Yep.
disturbing it down to like twenty percent, then we, it's a little more palatable. Just take off the twenty-four inches off top, grade it all the way back at ten feet away, build your fence or whatever you want. And that, that'd be another option. That'd probably be the most cost effective option and the easiest one. Uh, but, you know, that's, that's two options. Uh, but, you know, that's, that's two options.
Mm-hmm.
Does any, does anybody, uh, want to have the entire wall removed and start from scratch? That's not something I would suggest. I don't, because when we, uh, I, you sure, Mr. Calabro, you don't want that? But when, I know you guys are, a lot of you guys are new to the process. Uh, usually when these kind of things come to us, the court usually sends it to us for somebody who has done a violation. They say, go back to the planning board and try and get a site plan approval and try to do some, uh, site amendments to get, get everything in approval. What, the way I've always approached it and the way I was taught back, you know, 15 years ago, was try to think about what you would have granted if they had come to you before they did the work. And usually there is something we would always give them within certain parameters that are defined by our code. So most of the time, I don't ask or I don't suggest that we start from scratch because, you know, sometimes there, there are other mitigating factors. There will be times where I will suggest that because somebody is a habitual offender. And when they're habitual offenders, you know, they, they don't have the excuse of, I didn't know or I tried and things like that. So that's why there's two different types of leeway that I usually suggest. And in this case, I wouldn't suggest starting from scratch. I would suggest taking the top course back, grading it back so we're below the 30% criteria. We're below the six feet. We can meet our code requirements. We, he doesn't have to start, you know, taking everything apart. And as long as some of the drainage issues can be satisfied on the sides of the wall, that would be my suggestion, but it's up to you guys. Everybody has a vote and it'd be up to the applicant whether he'd want to do it. And now, I don't know if, uh, if Mr. Cook has any, anything to say, which way he would suggest, which would be the easiest or the easiest to verify, the best inspection methods, whatever, you know?
Well, can, can I also suggest, uh, you know, an opportunity to have a conversation with, uh, Mr. CRC, the engineer, so that we can come up with a plan and propose that to the village so that, you know, we can, um, be, because there are a variety of different issues that pop up, especially with respect to, you know, the, the question of the slopes. And, you know, the, um, so if it's going to, if, if it's going to be where Mr. Calabro is going to remove one course, what happens? How does it grade? What goes on? You know, wh, what are the issues that pop up? And then with respect to the, the terracing as well, um, so that we can have the, we can have CRC as the engineer, you know, make a plan that Mr. Calabro would feel happy with, that would also satisfy the village's, uh, requirements.
With all due respect, Mr. Garcia, we have been asking for these types of things for the last couple of months. Mr. CRC has known since the beginning of this process that this wall probably would have been, have to be modified. So those types of contingencies should have been already considered. We had asked the applicants as well as Mr. Thompson to come up with ideas for plantings and gray and, uh, you know, beautifications and everything. I, I actually volunteered to be the go-between so the two didn't have to discuss things. Not one piece of paper was dropped off until about four hours ago. So, you know, the time, that, our timeframe, one of the reasons why I had requested the public hearing to be closed last month is because we are on a clock to make a decision of either approving or denying. And I'm not somebody who wants to keep going to analyze and analyze and analyze. People have to be responsible and professional to come up with ideas and to think on their own of things that might happen. So the time for Mr. CRC to come up with contingency plans was done when the public hearing was closed, at least in my mind.
I got you, Sean.
We're going to come up with ideas. We're going to give them to the applicant and he can choose to take it or not take it and we'll deny the application and then we will start from scratch. So, you know, we, we've been planning, we've been working with this since, since October and here we are in January.
And I got that. And I recognize that there's been a long time that this is, that this has been kicking around. But we're at the point now where a decision's been made with, with respect to, you know, what the plans are. You know, what it is that we're looking at. And at least now that we have some concrete ideas regarding, you know, what the issues are, what, you know, what's being sought, now we can put those plans, we, we can put those plans in, you know, into, into effect. And that's my position. And I would offer that to the village.
And what, what we could do is once the planning board comes up with two or three options, I'll ask Stephanie to write a resolution with those options. I'll ask George and the building inspector to put inspection criteria in there that will have to be followed. And that's, that, he could choose one and all of the stipulations within the resolution will be followed according to which option he wants. Stephanie, do you understand what I'm saying?
I certainly do. Yep.
So, and that's the way we've operated before when we've approved site plans. We put stiffs in there and the stiffs have to be followed or the permit is pulled and then, then we'll start for, start from scratch.
Okay. And the permit that, that's in, that's being held now by the village re, remains in effect until Mr. Calabro decides, you know, what, what avenue he decide, he wants to move with.
We're not revoking the permit. We have it.
Okay, all right. I just want to be, I just want, I just want to understand and be clear and just, just make sure that I'm understanding as well. Also from Mr. Calabro to hear.
We're, we're not here to design the project. We're here to give options on how to, on how to follow our code and so he could use his property without, without, uh, any impact on the neighbors, you know? And, and that's part of, that's part of the, the process of, of granting these types of permits. And that's what our code tells us to do. And that's what the state planning laws say too, so. We're trying to follow the rules and give as much leeway as we can. So right now we have two options. One is to remove the top course of, uh, block and grade back. And, uh, the other is to terrace 48 inches, uh, uh, I'm sorry. Remove the top course, terrace back six feet and then go another 24 inches. Is that the way I understand that the board has, uh, has thought about and would like? Tracy, you looked like you wanted to say something.
Can you just repeat the second option again?
The second option was the, the terracing option that was, uh, suggested by Jennifer and explained by George. Well, I'm, can you go over that again? Was it removing one course or removing two courses?
Well, I guess it would be, it would be to terrace, right? So he has to have 10 feet between the walls.
Yep.
Or he could only match out at six feet. So he could design that terrace however he wants, right? So I don't know what the property, what, how far in front of the new wall is Thompson's property line. But if he could get, if it was 10 feet, right, he could build two, two, six-foot walls essentially if he really wanted to.
Well, if-
But if it wasn't, then he would only be accumu, he would only have the accumulative height of 10, of six feet. If he didn't have 10 feet between the two walls.
So that option would, would include really taking that wall that's existing there right now and really moving it?
No, I mean, no, I'm not, I'm not telling him to remove that. I'm saying he can only have a six-foot height over 10 feet in, in,
No, I don't think it would.
In parallel, right? He can only have six feet over 10 feet, however he wants to.
That's right.
But rather than have a huge six-foot wall back, you know, the back of his neighbor's yard, if that's not what his neighbor wants to see and has complained sort of about, um, how could he make it prettier?
Yeah, you could either move, take the top course off and move it, take two courses off and move it.
Correct.
One court, grade it. And that, that would help alleviate, if it was to be regraded, it would help alleviate the steep slopes because we were assured beforehand that, uh, by Mr. CRC that there was no grade over 30%. Once topo is written, we saw that there were grades over 30%, which makes it a little harder for us, but.
Well, I'd like to just, um, chime in here.
Sure.
So I have plenty, plenty of space. Once that shed is removed, um, I technically just need to have the, um, the grade of dirt from the edge of my property to the base of my wall so that the total height of the wall is below six feet.
Yeah.
That's it. I'll just do that. I'll take the shed away. I'll build it, I'll build it from my property line. I'll build a, build dirt up, I'll fill it in, drainage, whatever you guys want to do.
Can't make steep slopes.
Oh, well, you, you're just-
The wall.
Wait, you can't, excuse me one minute. You can't, hey, Brian, you can't create steep slopes either without a permit.
No, what he's saying, he just wants to put dirt in front of the wall to lower the height. And the issue with that is on his property, he already has about two or three feet terrace in front of that wall. Is that, is that correct?
Well, that's six feet in one corner and, yeah, three feet in the other.
No, in front of the wall, which is on the side of that shed, there was already a three-foot terrace in front of that. So you want to put two, another two feet of dirt in front of that. So you'll have a five-foot terrace and then a six-foot block wall on top of that. That doesn't, it-
I say that the majority of the wall, the majority of the wall is three blocks high. That's six feet. Each block is two feet high. They're six feet. That's three blocks. Six, that's still six feet. Like, now, how many, how many times I add it up? So where the block wall is four foot, four blocks deep, that whole bottom block is completely covered. So that's still only six feet. So if you're looking for six feet, I have six. That's what I'm kind of, you know, not liking it is one thing, right? But if you're, if you're telling me I need six feet and I have six feet, then what's the problem?
I, I understand.
I think what we need to do is maybe we need to, I'll, I'll talk to the building inspectors again. We'll come back and maybe we'll need to measure it again. It's not like, I'll use his measurement.
Well, if we, if we're going to do that, then we're going to have to get the engineering evaluation of you setting the lower course on already a three-foot terraced foundation. Because that's not shown on your prints either.
Sorry.
Where the, where the shed is, half of the shed, there is railroad tie planters.
Right.
That you put the lower, lower course on. So there's no real foundation there.
I, I can do-
In engineering.
It's just a rotted out, rotted out railroad tie wall. I just rip it out.
Yeah, and then it's undermining your foundation. Because according to your drawings, you're only in a couple of inches. That's what the, that's what the drawing show. Says six inch.
The whole, the whole base of the block is on, is on ledge. It's, it's solid. I, I hammered it with the, with the machine. It's all on solid block.
It's, your drawing shows it's only six inches. So for you to say that your block is all the way down, that's not according to your drawings.
Well, that, yeah, there's ledge there. The, but the block's sitting on gravel.
I understand.
The ledge is what's underneath the block. It's all ledge there. It's not, not loose dirt that's just going to wash away underneath the block.
So what's holding that foundation in front of it? What's holding that besides the rotten railroad ties?
Yeah, I'm, now you're kind of losing me here.
So, so?
Chairman?
You see, you're saying what-
Yes, sir, Mr. Cook.
Yes, I, I wanted to show you, uh, I took some pictures of that at that time. And on that corner right behind the shed, you have four full blocks showing.
Yeah, right, yeah. I have four full blocks and so that's, uh, two and a half feet each. So that's-
Two, two foot each.
So that, that's eight foot there.
Yeah. So I, I know Mr. Calabro wants to go and, and, and put dirt in front of it once the, uh, shed is removed so he can reduce that height.
Yeah. In that short slope, he's going to have to add two feet of soil.
Yeah.
And what's going to hold that? That's going to be more than 15 or 20%. I mean, that's up there.
No, I, I understand. I, I went there, I saw.
Yep, okay. I just wanted to reaffirm the fact that there's four blocks there.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that.
I said, yeah, I said the majority of the wall is three blocks high. That's six feet because each block is two feet high. Then where the wall is four blocks high is where the shed is. And I can come up, if I, you know, the dirt just needs to come up to the bottom of the wall and we got, once I remove the shed, we're, I have that six feet. I'm saying the majority of the wall is six feet.
So what you would like to do is remove, what you would like to do is remove that shed and put two feet of dirt on that corner that shows the four blocks, right?
Would be three, won't, won't show them because the bottom block is completely buried.
Well, what Stephanie's saying, you're not allowed to do that. That's illegal. You're creating a steep slope. You can't fill in the front of a fence, a front of a wall to get your height requirement. And George can interpret that because it's, there's also other words when it comes to a grading. Uh, and, and the way the site is, uh, the natural grade, there's all different kinds of words that you measure from. You're actually allowed over a six-foot wall if the majority of the grade is below the sight line. So there, there are a bunch of different things in there. Uh, I don't think our consultants, or I would suggest that you just go there and put two feet of dirt in front of the wall to get your six feet.
That's correct. Yeah.
So how far, if I was to do, how far can, because that sounds like everybody, we're all kind of confused about it. In front of the wall, how, how close can the, can a wall be in front of the current wall? Is it, because those said a couple of different things. It's four feet, six feet, 10 feet. There's all things.
Hey, Brian, that depends on how high the wall is that you are leaving there.
Right.
You have to have 10 feet between the walls if the total of those walls is over six feet. So if you want to do a two-foot and a four-foot, right, you can do that closer. If you want to do a four-foot and a four-foot, you have to have 10 feet between them. So it depends on what your plant, what your thoughts are and how high each wall is going to be.
Yeah, lose more thought.
So Stephanie, what you're saying is, is where that, uh, where that wall is already terraced, that Mr. Calabro says is his property, which it is, that wall can't even be built within 10 feet of that if the combination of the first terrace and the second terrace is greater than six feet. Is that, that's a-
That is correct.
Okay. So we might not have the option to do the, remove the one course. Because, uh, the shed, yeah, that's all, that's already terrace. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to, uh, have the property staked out so we could see the total grade. So, uh, Mr. Cook, do you, you understand what I'm talking about? What I'm talking about, the, the first terrace?
Yes, I understand. That, that would be the one that's, uh, looking at the wall. It would be on the left if you're looking-
No, it's actually in front.
Right.
Yeah. Because on the right-hand side, you have the shed and to the left of the shed, you have the railroad ties with, they used to have the planters. That's about, uh, what would you say that is? About two feet?
Huh? No, I don't know.
Mr. Cook?
Oh, you're asking me?
Yeah, that, that looked like about two feet to me when I was there. It looked like, uh, maybe three railroad ties.
Uh, approximately. That's correct.
Yeah, so, so that height would have to be included in the total wall height then?
Yeah.
Okay, so removing that one block will only take you down, uh, two feet. So that would be six.
And, and then you're still back at eight with the two-foot railroad tie wall and three blocks. You'd be at eight.
Okay, so what did the rest of the board members think with this new information? Okay, so this is what I'm going to ask Stephanie to draw up with the, with the board's permission. Uh, to remove one or two courses to either remove and regrade the property back or terrace the blocks so that no wall is greater than six feet high. Those measurements are to take into consideration the previously terraced property, uh, previously terraced areas that the wall is sitting on. Also as a stipulation, the drawings should be amended to show the previously terraced, uh, wall that was being used by Mr. Tompkins that is actually on Mr. Calabro's land. All measurements are to be verified by the village building inspector or engineer. The option of, of which option to use will be up to the applicant.
Right.
Stephanie, do you think you could write something up like that or does the rest of the board have any other stipulations or any other ideas?
Well, can I, uh, Sean, if I may, can I also have you include the op, the option for Mr. Calabro as well to, um, you know, remove the, the top or that last course and then regrade from there?
No, no, you can take, you take that off, but there again, he said that, that it's not, his property also includes another terrace part, spa, uh, part that he's going to remove the shed and wants to modify the front. Whenever he modifies it, all those measurements have to, have to be within our code.
Right, well, understood. But he was, that, that was a supposition on his part. He was simply speak, talking a lot in terms of what, what, you know, what options he may, he may have available to him.
Okay. Well, uh, Stephanie, are, are we at the, do we meet the legal intent of the six- Okay. Well, uh, Stephanie, are, are we at the, do we meet the legal intent of the six feet? And can we give him any more, any more room or space or measurements or numbers? Is there any other way we can give him more leeway?
You know, not that I see, but I'm, I'm kind of, I wasn't aware of this terrace thing, and the three railroad ties that are sort of a wall, I guess, already, and they're within ten feet, is that what I'm hearing? I mean, I've never been out to the property.
That is correct.
Okay, so yeah, you got a problem. I mean, they have to comply, you have to comply with the code, so... Is the railroad tie wall necessary there? Is there, is there something it's doing, was it there before?
The railroad tie wall was built by Mr. Thompson, uh, that was all bushes and trees. And Mr. Thompson, uh, according to him, had gone to the original owner and asked him if he could dig there to put some plantings there. And, uh, Mr. Thompson then built the railroad tie wall, there was actually two steps uh, for, and he had filled it in with dirt and there were flowers and stuff in there. Since then, it has, uh, come into disrepair and it became rotten. That's, that's, that terrace spot is not on Mr. Ciarcia's drawings. If you look on the front
Yeah.
of the drawings, where he has the, uh, the measurements for the minimum buried depth of the level pad, uh, if you go right from the bottom block, it's probably about maybe four feet from the bottom. Four feet horizontal, and then, uh, down about maybe two feet or three feet, about two feet vertically.
And the railroad ties are on Mr. Thompson's property?
No, according to the drawings, they're on, uh, they're on Mr. Calabro's property.
And do they have to stay?
No. But if it was to be removed, all that dirt would be removed, and then the foundation would be undermined.
Okay.
Uh, if, if I may, Sean, Mr. Calabro, does that, does the base of that first row or the first course of Baffia, does it go below the grade on, on that, um, on that initial terrace part, or is it on top of it?
I guess it's on, I guess technically it'd be on top of it.
According to the drawings, it says it can't be on top of it, it has to be a minimum of six inches in depth. So it can't be sitting on top.
Yeah, can we hear from some of the engineers, please? Cause I feel like this is getting, um, there's railroad ties that Mr. Thompson put on Mr. Calabro's, and somehow that's helping the wall, the stability of the wall, is that what I'm hearing? So we can't remove it? So even six...
One of the problems I have is I was provided with a survey, and why the surveyor neglected to pick up that wall um, is unfortunate, but I think we need to know exactly where it is.
Yeah.
So whether we take some field measurements, or, uh, we get the surveyor back out there to get the information we need. Uh, because I, I feel like we're dealing with a lot of speculation here. Uh, the only thing I know for sure is we don't have enough room uh, in front of the wall on Mr. Thompson's side to build another wall on that side. And even if we did, we're still constrained by the, the total six-foot height. You know, based upon the, the survey I was provided with, there was, um, on the order of two feet of difference between the shed side and the far side. Um, so we'll get, we'll get some more information. I mean, I, I think the, um, decisions that we have to evaluate become clearer once we, um, have a little more information.
Okay, but you understand, you're understanding the height constraints, because what I'm hearing now is there's a railroad tie wall, which is two feet high or whatever it is, and a six-foot high or a seven-point-six-foot high, uh, retaining wall, right? All within, all within ten feet.
You know, the area was overgrown, we got a survey, and we designed the wall according to the survey data we were provided with. So now that it's all open and you can see, we'll, we'll incorporate that additional data to, um, to, to make a better proposal.
So Stephanie, can, can you write up that stipulation the way I, uh, said it, and include these options that the applicant will, uh, include one of those options? And that it'd be approved by the George, inspected and approved by George and, uh, inspected or approved by, uh, the building inspector?
Yeah.
So, could you repeat back what, uh, the, the, uh, two or three options that we gave them?
That we gave them tonight?
Yeah, cause I'd like to have that in a resolution.
Alright, so my understanding is, they can, although I'm not totally in agreement with it anymore because of the retaining wall, but notwithstanding, everybody's understanding is, the total height of this wall, provided it stands alone and there's nothing else within ten feet, can be six feet high. If you wanna put another wall, terraced or otherwise, close to that, the total of both can only be six feet. However, what I'm hearing tonight is that we already have a six-foot or a seven-point-six-foot, depending on who's measuring it, close to a two-foot retaining wall already, right? Which makes the wall, whether it's six feet or not now.
Uh, here, this, this, this is the way, this is the way I'd like it to read. The existing wall will be modified in one, uh, one of the following ways. To either be terraced by removing one or two courses and terracing, terracing it back in accordance with our code.
Yep.
Alright, second option will be to remove one or two courses and grade back. Okay? No combination of any terrace within ten feet shall exceed six feet in height. Okay? The, uh, drawings shall be amended to show actual field consi, configuration. The property shall be staked and marked for verification of location. All, all, uh, all construction shall be verified by village representative. No portion or combination thereof of wall to be left as built shall exceed six feet.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Do you think I missed anything?
You didn't miss anything, not, not in terms of getting it compliant with the code. My only other thought is, and I'm not, you know, the engineer, so, I don't know how it was, I don't know how much of the slopes were disturbed, and I don't know how you go back and show that. Um, so that we didn't, so that we know how were we grading it, are we grading it down to just thirty percent? And it needs an engineering, in my opinion.
This, this would be, this is, this would be kinda difficult to, uh, to ascertain, if the... If it is gonna be graded back, and, and as left topo, should be supplied to the village to show, we, we know what the beginning grade was, majority of it was greater than thirty, uh, thirty percent.
Yeah.
But we, we can't change that.
Okay.
Uh, one other stipulation, uh, all, all drainage shall be verified not to impinge upon the neighbors. And George, George, do you think this is feasible from, uh, from the village standpoint?
I think you've outlined something that the applicant act, can act upon and put something together. The only thing I would add is, um, in this, in this proposal coming back, they provide a cross-section of what, uh, of what, what they, uh, wanna propose. Or what, what solution they are gonna give to us. So that way, we have something, you know, either a wall, and then the ten feet back, another wall, and they start all over, whatever they decide to do. So that we have something, uh, to look at in the field to say, okay, this is the way it was, is intended to be built.
Okay. Uh, one other thing, uh, just to, to make sure, uh, you write in there under no circumstances shall any construction or modification of existing conditions be changed without the approval of a village, of the village.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
Uh, does any, any, any other board members or consultants have any input, or do you think we missed anything, or the board members want something different, or what?
I, I would add one other thing, we talked about access. Um, I would add a, uh, another line or, uh, stipulation that access to, uh, for maintenance should be, uh, worked into the final product as well.
Okay.
Okay.
So Stephanie, can you read that back, so we can vote on it?
No.
Well, you know...
It's all in scribble, but I do get it, because you're saying the existing wall modified, you're terraced, you remove one or two courses, right?
Yeah, and grade back.
Or you can do another one and grade back, you can remove one or two courses and smaller wall grade back, um, terrace it, you can remove one or two courses, um... I don't know what that one was, but I'll figure it out. And then, uh, obviously, no combination of whether you choose to remove one or two courses, grade back, or build a second wall, and under no circumstances can the measurement be above... Well, I'm just gonna say they have to be within the code requirements, and then I'll mention that that's within ten feet of each other, they can't exceed six feet, so that's easy.
And, and, and two other things to add to this, we, we didn't really, we've, we've kinda walked through...
I don't take it short handed, you know.
We, we, we walked ourselves through how to, how to get something that's code compliant, but what about aesthetics? The plantings and the, the look of the wall, which was the neighbors', which, which started this. So is there any change to the aesthetics of the block or the plantings that should be incorporated?
I don't wanna tell them what to put, put there, but you know, you obviously can't just put up a barbed wire fence, you know, so... You're, you're pretty, you're pretty, uh, creative when you talk about these types of beautification easements, I think we used to call them.
Yes.
And you always come up with different ideas for different types of plantings that would be suitable for, you had that type of area with that type of drainage. You know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that, that we know that much about it, but it has, obviously has to be aesthetically pleasing, but also right for the environment that it's gonna be in. So, can you throw together some suggestions and, and put that in there, or do, you know?
We can do it.
I know Mr. Calabro sent something to the village this afternoon, you wanna review that and see if that is suitable?
Yes.
So just, Stephanie, just put in there some type of, uh, beautification easement or beautification, uh, I forget what we used to call it, what did we call it?
And that was a, uh, you're right, a beautification, uh, or a screen, screening and beautification or something like that.
Maintenance, we used to call it some kind of maintenance, planting maintenance or something like that. We put that into the site plan for the Apollonia Building around fifteen years ago.
And when actually Barbara used to do it, she did it for the, the property across from, um, from village wall too.
Yeah. Yeah, just something, something minor there, nothing, just to say, hey, I'm gonna maintain this. Plus, it's gonna be probably part of Mr. Ciarcia's requirement, so that the, uh, so that the, uh, the dirt and the land, the land doesn't wash away from the
Yes.
underpinnings of the wall.
Yes.
Alright, Sean, and let me continue real quick, cause I'm reading my own scribbles, so, um, you want the drawing amended to show the actual field conditions, it has to be staked and marked, staked and marked. Um, all construction has to be verified by a village representative, obviously, so don't do anything. Under no circumstances can anything be modified or changed right now, so the existing conditions can't be changed without approval of the village. Um, if we grade, if the choice, well, they're gonna grade it back, we need a new topo to show the new grade. Uh, all drainage verified, so that, you know, there's not to impinge on neighbors. You need, um, George wanted to add cross-sections of what solution they plan on, so when they figure out what they're gonna do, they're gonna provide a drawing and a cross-section. And then you want aesthetics of some sort, and I'll figure out how to word that for you. And I think that's everything, is that all of it?
Yeah, we're not, I don't think we, there's nothing we could do with the, uh, with the, with the steep slopes and all that, so, you know, that'll all be included in the, uh,
Not to be...
We don't need a special, uh, special approval for any of that, we'll just include it all in that resolution. Okay?
Okay.
Does, does any other of the, uh, board members have any questions about that? Would they like anything modified, or? Uh, I'll shut, I'll shut the, a motion to...
Can I ask one, can I ask one question? Is the, sorry, I was trying to look, is the code explicit in saying that if you have two retaining walls like this, they have to be ten feet apart? I just wanna know, I just couldn't find it, so I was looking for it.
You know why you can't find it, it's because it's, it's really under what says fence, fences. Um, and we've now, we've now tried to make the difference, but there's a, a line in there that says fences, walls, shrubs, hedges. And so, when I talked about it, it was originally talking about a fence on top of a wall. Uh, because people were doing, you know, a four-foot wall and then, but so what it says is the height requirement of six feet.
But I mean, if, so, I'm just playing devil's advocate, so I, I see that part about the fence. But if both walls... If the two walls are, you know, if I look, if I just look online, typically it says, as long as the dimension between the two walls is greater than the height of the upper wall, that it would be, it would be okay if it was engineered.
Engineered pressure wise, yeah.
Correct. So I mean, is that a possibility, even if it was over t, six feet? And I'm just asking, I'm not, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Well, whatever the code says, if, if...
But the code doesn't re, it's not really, listen, it's talking about fences, we're talking about walls.
No, it's the wording, I believe Stephanie said the wording says walls, fences, and what others, what else?
What's wrong?
Steph?
Sorry, um... You know, it says other yard screening, walls, shrubs, hedges, under six feet tall, maybe located any and whatever, maintained. And then you go into a section that says fences. The way the village has always read that is that you're talking about, you know, they're only talking about a fence that you wanna put on top of a wall. And then it's, you know, so, the way it's always been interpreted, so I don't know the answer to her question, because I guess you can interpret it in any way you want, but the way the village board has always read this to me is that the height requirement of six feet is six feet. Whether it's a wall, a fence, or a combination of a wall with a fence on top, if you wanna go higher than that combined, you have to be ten feet away, and that's just the way it's always been.
Or engineered?
Excuse me? Sorry.
Was it just ten feet, or was it, um, ten feet or engineered?
Uh, I don't know, I don't, I don't, uh, let me look, hold on. I don't know what you mean, I don't know what you mean for engineered.
The way we suggested the resolution, it didn't include a height, it said as per code. So, it'll be up to, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna interpret every single word of the code, that's up to the building inspector and the attorney for the legal definitions of what is enforceable and what isn't. That's why we left that part of the resolution to say as per code and not six feet. Is that correct, Stephanie? Do you agree, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Stephanie, you agree?
I agree, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? So I'm, would like to have a motion to adopt the resolution as Stephanie read back and as discussed. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Jennifer, second it?
Second.
Second by Eileen, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Stephanie, do I have to, uh, do, do I have, when you give that resolution, you want me to sign it, or do we just email it out to, uh, Mr. Ciarcia and the applicant, Mr. Garcia?
No, not, well, yeah, after I email it to you, and then the board. And you let me know that that's what, you know, you wanted, and it's worded the way you all think, and then when you're ready, I'll, you know, I'll sign it.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the final draft for the planning board recommendations for the overlay district legislation. Uh, as you know, the village board has been discussing changing the C1, C2 zone, as well as removing part of the M1 zone that's on Overly Close Road. They have asked for our input, there has been two or three separate drafts on this. Uh, the last one we received back in the middle of, you said, actually like two weeks ago, I think. Right, Mr. Stone, and you sent that like two weeks ago?
Actually, I think the last one was last Thursday or seven.
Last Thursday, yeah. So, I... So I had, I had based my response that I had sent out to you guys based on the previous document that was given to us, I think in August. Uh, since then, the draft legislation has been changed. Yeah, Mr. Solman had put in their parts of, uh, the special permit use. Did you guys, did every, all the board members receive the email from Mr. Solman about the change in the draft legislation? As well as my, uh, my comments?
Sean, I think it actually came from Marcus.
Oh yeah, well, you wrote it though.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, Marcus, Marcus sent it out. It, it, what I meant for you, I, I, I mean the author.
I know, I know, I just wanted to make sure they have the right thing.
I got you. So did everybody have a chance to look at the new code, the new, uh, appendix for zoning uses? And have a chance to read my comments? My comments were based on the input of, of what you guys had sent me and some discussions I had, as well as some discussions I had with, uh, with some of the village board members. I didn't send it to George or Marcus or you, Mr. Solman. I just sent Stephanie a copy of it today. Uh, I wanted, I wanted more members to.
I think, I think Mr. Solman is my father.
I'm sorry, David.
That's okay.
So I, I only wanted to do one draft, after you sent it to me, I already typed this up. So I sent out what I had and I didn't want to change it again. I only want to change it one more time. So what do the board members think about the changes? The, the overlay district, uh, permitted as of right use is similar to what it is right now, except that it's a, a doubling of the dwellings. Uh, currently our code allows for four dwellings and a u, per acre. Uh, but the proposal is, is to be eight dwellings per acre with, uh, down to 20,000 square feet. So that is, that is one of the changes that is in the code. The biggest change in the prior legislation was everything was as of right and did not require a commercial component. And I have always been against that because I, I don't think it shores up the tax base. I'm sure that you guys know my position on it, I've written it many times. So don't, don't go over that again. But, uh, what comments or changes would you like in the draft review that the board wants from us? Because like I said, I know some things are going to change because the as of right and special use permit has changed, so. Want to start from the beginning or? Anybody? Bueller? Okay, so the first thing on my memo was a traffic concern. Does anybody, does the traffic concern change based on the as of right use and special permit use? Jen, you had, you had a question on the traffic, that's why I incorporated your comments.
I have a concern about traffic, yeah. And no, I don't think it, it doesn't really address it, no, so it's still a concern.
So do you, do you believe the traffic issue that I had written in my reply is, is still applicable?
Yes.
So you would like it, uh, left as written?
Yes.
Okay.
I would too. Cause that 9A corridor is just awful.
Yes. I agree too.
We're almost, we're almost like 202.
We don't want to do that.
And, and you know, that's fine because we can, as I wrote in there, we could, as a special use permit, we could, we could change things, but you believe it's still, uh, still an issue even with the proposed as of use? The eight dwelling units per acre? You think that that's, that big of a, an impact, the, the X-ray apartment? If so, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to at least validate it's not. I mean, I do think it is a potential issue.
So what I'll do is I'll remove the special use permit hard, because it's already addressed in the new code. And I'll ask for verification or validation that there will be no traffic impact based on the as of right proposed use. How's that?
Yeah, validation, yeah.
By the way, I agree with that comment as well.
Okay, great. So I'll, I'll change that part. Uh, I'll add that in there and I'll, I'll get rid of the special use stuff that I had in the traffic because that's already addressed the coaching. Okay, uh, how about the parking aspect?
Oh, it's a bit more.
Do you also want that, that comment verification or validation that there be no impact based on the increase? Because there again, you have to remember, special use and as of right is, is different. Special use, we take these things into consideration when granting the special use permit. So we really want to focus on the as of right use right now, okay? Which is different on the last, second draft. So remember, right now you're allowed four with 50% commercial, that's the code now. What we're talking about is changing it to eight per acre with the 50%. So you're really talking about the changing of four dwelling units, okay? So that, that's, I want to make sure that everybody understands the difference between what we have now and what we're proposing. The increase of four dwelling units, okay? Do you, do you guys understand the delineation?
Yeah, I have a question, Sean. Um, what properties would, uh, these be, would these impact on the right of use?
Any, any one that's listed on the map?
Well, what I'm saying is, um, in regards to the parking, are these properties on side streets? I mean, you don't really have any park, parking for side streets.
I should, excuse me, I should point out that, um, whether it's by right or special permit, onsite parking has to be provided for the commercial and the residential or, or the strictly residential. So on, on, off street rather, onsite, off street parking has to be provided regardless. And if there isn't enough parking, you don't get all the units.
Yeah, no, I, listen, I understand that. Like I said, when I wrote that, we didn't have the special permit part.
Right.
So I was going by the worst case scenario of allowing everybody to put the highest density stuff in there. And based, and that was part of my comment at the last meeting also where they said we can change the plan with the park. I said, you can't approve a developer to make this size of, uh, apartment building and say, by the way, you can't do it because it's not in the park.
Right.
That was, that was the conundrum that I wanted to try to explain, that the Article 78 process would preclude, preclude us from making that decision. So maybe the, maybe the parking is not an issue now because of the special permit aspect of it.
Right.
So the rest of you feel okay with me removing that, uh, parking issue? Because we now can include that in different parts of the site plan?
Can you, David, I, I think yes. Can you repeat what you just said about the, they are required to provide parking for, for the commercial and the residential, correct? That's what you said.
The only way to get around that is to go to the zoning board for a variance.
Short of going to the zoning board for a variance, they don't get all the, they don't go, can't go to the maximum FAR or floor area or a number of dwelling units if they don't provide the parking, the onsite parking.
Gotcha, then I'm okay with it being.
We've had different development, there are different, uh, parking requirements based on the square footage and the type of use. So office space will, will require less parking than a restaurant would. So each use would be different. All right, so whenever we think of allowing parking for certain developments, we always have to think about the biggest possible use as being a restaurant. And each one of those would have to have a certain number of spots. I forget what it is, two or three per, per square foot or something like that. So, but there again, now it's not the worst case scenario where we don't have to worry about limiting the size of something based on the parking because we're only increasing it by four, four units. It's not the, the biggest maximum.
All right, so that's applicable to both the special use and for the as right use?
Yes.
Okay.
So do you guys mind if I take that out or would you like it amended somehow? Take it out?
Yeah, I agree.
I think we can take it out.
Okay. Okay, the next thing that I had written down there was the zoning issues. All right, one of the things that I'm, I'm pretty against is taking away the powers of one board and giving it to another. It's kind of circumventing the process. Now, there's two parts of the zoning law that the village board would like to designate to the planning board. One is the lot coverage and the other is the setbacks. And the reason being is that the village board would like to streamline the permitting process and not have the applicant go to the zoning board for a variance for lot coverage or setbacks. And I'm, I'm pretty well a, against that. I don't like giving people, affording some people the ability to do something and not having the other people the same ability. Uh, I think the zoning issues should be handled by the zoning board and not the planning board. You know, and, and as I wrote in the, as I wrote in my response, there are 20, 25 properties that have successfully navigated this process. And I don't think the planning board should be taking over zoning board issues. You know, and I don't know how the rest of, the, the rest of you feel about it, but if, if you don't agree, I'll take it out. Uh, I think zoning is there for a reason, planning is there for a reason, you know? How do you, I feel?
I think you should leave it in there, Sean, so that way they, they go through the proper steps to get the proper variance and the, and the zoning.
And is, I think it, it also is a continuity factor. Because there are other people who come to the zoning board who are trying to develop their property, who want different lot coverage variances. And if we afford a few, some property owners in the commercial district, that opportunity to go to the planning board to change it, why would they have to go to the zoning board to change it? You know, I just, I just like having defined roles and responsibilities. I don't like mixing the two, the, the law and the, the idea. Cause the planning board isn't the lawmaker. We go for site plans, we use different things. The zoning board is law. The zoning board is law interpretation and they grant variances based on the law. So I, I, Jeff wants to keep it and I want to keep it and I don't know how the rest of you feel.
I'd like to keep it in. I think that it should be, the rules should be the same for everyone.
Okay.
I agree, I agree with that.
Jen doesn't seem to agree.
No, I, I, I'm just thinking, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not opposed to be honest, so I'm fine with it being in. Just trying to think of the opposite end, that's all.
Yeah, well, see, the, the process gets lengthened when you have to go for a variance. Cause variances could take two or three months. You need a 30 day notification, you need, so it does slow the process down. And the applicant isn't always guaranteed the outcome that he wants. That is one of the reasons why years ago, we had requested and required commercial applicants when they came to the village to put an escrow together. Because they would go through an entire process over six, eight months a year, use all of our resources. They didn't get the outcome they wanted, they abandoned the project. And now the village is left holding the bank for all of the consultants, the consultants fees, all of the meeting fees. So we didn't feel that the resident should have to pay for that because the applicant didn't get what he wanted. But in this case, in these zones, the applicant most of the time has gotten what they wanted. I'm not saying that they always will, but it has been a consistent application of the law and everybody has been treated the same and nobody has been afforded an opportunity or an advantage over anybody else. So that's one of the reasons why I, I would like zoning board to do zoning stuff and planning board to do planning stuff.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the tax revenue aspect that I, I, uh, put in there. There again, that was based on the, uh, as of rate uses, the, the maximum as of rate uses. I had used some of the same terminology that I had used before. I also added in there, uh, some things that other communities are doing. One is Broward Cliff Manor, I know there's another community that just changed something too. I think Chapel Quahdod did something. But, uh, how would you like this changed? Because this, this does, this is different based on the special use permit. Because we're allowed to take into consideration the impact to the tax base, if I remember correctly, Stephanie. Uh, that is part of some of the classes I took. They talk about the advantage to the community and tax revenue is one of the advantages of the community that can be considered for the issuance of a special use permit. But there again, this all changes now, so how would you like the tax revenue aspect of it changed? Or would you like verification that there's no negative impact?
I'd like verification there's no negative impact.
So if we do that, we're going to have to set certain parameters that they can go by. So what parameter or what, what information would you like to make it more palatable? It's, it's tough to say something globally, we have to set parameters so that they can be defined and evaluated.
I agree, Sean, because negative, negative impact, you know, can be one school, child or a hundred. You know what I mean?
Yes, I know.
I don't know how you're going to put parameters on what you deem as a negative.
Well, in my, in my previous response over the summer, I gave specific parameters on properties that could be evaluated based on the change of use and the square footage of use. There were, there were certain ones I put in there, like the Timco building. Like, uh, I forget which other ones I did, but I believe I sent, sent them out and I had asked for that evaluation.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, I didn't receive any quantitative data. It was, it was more, you know, it should work and this should happen and this could happen and this might be okay and, you know, and it's just examples of things, but there was no documentation.
Yeah.
All right, I, I just want to input this, uh, put this in. I took that webinar yesterday regarding retail versus dark stores. And what they were trying to say was as the older generation doesn't want to change the character or to, uh, change anything residential, they are, it's the younger group that is talking behind the scenes about more residential, changing, um, build, changing your home to either add more occupancy or to take a building that is, uh, empty or that is, uh, foreclosed on however that municipality can do that and converting that into residential or apartment buildings, apartments. So it's really, you know, I don't really know how much I agree, and they said, commercial is the way to go for tax revenue. But the avenue right now is going towards adding more apartments or rooms or increasing occupancy, uh, taking illegal homes and trying to make them legal so that they can add rooms legally and then legalize the people that live there. Um, so it's, I don't know what the trend is going to be.
Oh, I understand that and the, the thing is, everybody knows at least through the research that I've done and the people I've talked to and I used to go to the same meetings that you were going to and everything. The, nobody disputes that commercial property is better for your tax base. We're not here to make that decision whether to pass the law or not pass the law. But without that information, I don't believe the elected officials can make an educated, uh, an, an educated decision. Cause they don't deal with these types of issues. You know, they're, they're a pie in the sky, people, this is what, this would be great, you know? But there, that's the reason why they reach out to us to get the kind of information to make those decisions. And right now, I don't think there's enough information that we could suggest that they pass this law on the tax revenue aspect of it. If they were to get the information that is requested, they could make the educated decision. Do you understand what I mean? So I believe our function, our function here is to give them the pros and cons the way we see it. And if they can rectify these issues, then they can make the informed decision. But right now, no matter what increase, special use or not, there just isn't the supporting data to be able to analyze that decision.
I'm more in favor, yeah, I'm more in favor of commercial, but I understand where, you know, how the trend might be going and they just don't know how to predict this.
No, no, it, that, absolutely, you know, every developer has always said, I can't make this project work unless I have 50 houses. And then the plan goes down to 10 houses and it's beneficial, it's 100% occupied and they're making money anyway. So there isn't a developer out there that's going to say, okay, no problem, I want the minimum and it's going to be great. So there isn't a developer out there that's gonna say, "Okay, no problem, I want the minimum and it's gonna be great." They're always gonna say they can't. I don't know if Mr. Cook has ever run into that, but I'm sure they have. You know, every developer can't make it work unless they got a skyscraper, you know, with 95% capacity. But there's plenty of them, right?
Yes, there is.
So do you want me to leave that tax revenue aspect in there? Understanding that the, there again, special use permit can use this criteria to limit the size. We already are allowed four, four units with the commercial aspect not to exceed 50%. So we're talking about a four-unit increase. Do you feel that the tax revenue issue with the four-unit increase, still with the commercial aspect, is a concern? Because the as-of-right use, you have to have the commercial component not to exceed 50%. So that's where I'm kinda, I don't think that this tax revenue issue really pertains to the as-of-right use. Do you understand?
Yeah, I'd rather leave it in. I mean, I, I would like some data.
Well, I understand, but remember, we're talking about as-of-right use.
Right, okay.
The data, we can request the applicant, if he wants a special use permit, we can say, you know, tell me how much Bannon Avenue apartments generate for the village and versus how much per square footage that the Carbone Building generates, a mixed use. And we can extrapolate that with the impact of $32,000 per student, you know, different things like that. We could do that with special use permit. So remember, the as-of-right, we're only talking about a four residential dwelling increase. So with those four residential units, do you think the tax revenue is that big of an issue?
Not enough.
And I, I really, I really don't think that it is, it's a, it is an impact, but really, maybe that, those four units would be a two-bedroom unit or a one-bedroom unit. Because there is a limitation on certain, uh, I think it's 20% three bedrooms or something like that.
Correct, Sean, correct.
So some of that, you're only, you're talking about one or two three bedrooms and a couple of, of two bedrooms and, so.
But isn't, isn't that per development, Sean?
That is correct, that is correct. But right now, there's you, there's probably only two or three properties that you're looking at that would be developed somewhat rapidly. The other ones are already occupied with, with special uses. You know, uh, there's only, I don't envision a developer coming in and buying three houses and building for, you know, almost a million dollars and bulldozing it to put in a, a four-unit structure on, on a 20,000 square foot property. You know, that is a possibility, but the feasibility is probably negligible. You know, so we're, we're really talking about probably the property by Buchanan Hardware, the property across from Buchanan Hardware that already had a, uh, permit issued or I shouldn't say permit issued, close to being issued for a mixed use, four apartments upstairs and a commercial downstairs, and the one across from the church. Those would be the major ones right now that I would see. I'm sure there are other ones that are missing, but I think those are the, the couple of properties that are, that are, uh, ones susceptible right now. So you're talking about, if it's 100%, you're probably talking about eight or nine multifamily units. Eight or nine units, I should say. So with a commercial.
With a commercial.
And that's the permitted use, though. So I, I really, I really would think that, as much as I'd like to keep it in, because it took me a long time to find those numbers, I hate to throw it away, but I think it, it probably should go.
Sorry about that, Sean.
That's okay. So if you guys agree, I, I'd like to remove it, or I'll keep it, you know, it took me a long time to find that number.
I mean, yeah, based on what, the amount of properties we're talking about, yeah, then I, I agree. I don't think it would make a difference.
So I'm gonna take it out if nobody has an, an objection.
No objection.
The next one that I had, I, I didn't give it a title or anything. I just, uh, felt that there really shouldn't be an overlay. I think the entire code should be amended to allow all property owners in the C1 and C2 district, the ability to, to use this. Uh, I've never been a big fan of, uh, allowing, uh, rights or privileges over one property owner over another. I think everybody should, should be able to benefit from what the village has to offer. And, you know, separating this, I know other communities use it, but we're a very small community and we're, we're talking about a relatively small area. So it would be my suggestion to the village board that all C1 and C2 properties benefit from this legislation. And instead of making it an overlay with two different, two different laws, uh, we should just change the code to include the amendments that would be in the overlay. What did the rest of the board members?
That would mean, that would mean it would go all the way down, it would go all the way down Tate.
Okay.
Like.
Anywhere.
Yeah, you have to make sure you're looking at.
Go all the way to First Street on Tate, that's what you, I mean.
Say again?
So C1 and C2, I mean, that would mean that these rules would apply to properties all the way down, all the way to First Street on Tate.
Uh, I'm not so sure, the, back in 2011 or 2012, we changed the zoning on that road based on the master plan. So I'm not sure if the maps were ever amended. Stephanie, do you remember that?
No, Sean, I can, I can share my screen if Marcus will allow it and show the map.
Was it amended, do you know?
No, we, uh, we did change, when I was mayor, we changed it.
No, I know, but you were saying you don't know whether the maps reflect that, right?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, because I don't believe it had gone all the way to First Street. I believe the properties across the street from the, uh, the strip, the strip mall, that was commercial, I believe we changed that. And, uh, I brought that up and there was another property that we had changed too, but.
Yeah, there it goes. Sean, what, what do you mean, I'm sorry?
Yeah. Uh, where's the circle?
The circle is right, uh, where the C1 is right there.
Okay. Yeah, we had changed some of that on First Street, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I think this is accurate.
All right.
Trying to find it.
That's fine, sure.
Right there is one, uh, right under the E, oh boy.
I mean, I think the idea is to keep, to keep this, um.
You're right, Jennifer, the idea was to, to, to leave the portion from the circle to First Street the way it is, pretty much, to keep the existing zoning intact.
And what was the benefit for that?
Well, it's, that area is not as, as commercial as the rest of it.
Yeah, I mean, then we're putting traffic all the way down Tate Street, Tate, Tate. I mean, I personally, I don't want that at all. So, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, Sean, in the sense of, you'd rather not use an overlay, but then rezone First, then rezone Tate from, from Lindsay to First Street. Because I don't want these rules to apply down to the avenue like that, for sure.
Okay.
All right.
I will do that.
Doesn't the overlay go to First Street? It doesn't go any farther.
No, it doesn't go to First Street. The, the overlay area would be in brown and, and blue.
Okay, so it stops at, uh, Cas- Casablanca, Casavelas and Teresa's Building?
Right, right.
Okay, right. So Jen, what were you saying, that you didn't want it to go down Tate Avenue?
Well, no, because, because Sean is saying he doesn't want to use an overlay, right? So you're saying to make these rules apply for all of C1 and C2.
Right.
And C1 goes all the way down, from, C1 goes all the way, continues all the way to First Street.
It always did, it, it always did, didn't it?
It does, yes, but I don't want, I don't want the overlay to include that.
See, the, the overlay, those lots are too small, those lots are below 20,000 square feet, so they wouldn't even be included. The old.
The only lot that, the one, the only lot that would be included was where the printer might be.
The printer, I don't think, I'm pretty sure the, the printer is down a little bit further than First Street.
No, it's, the printer's before First Street.
I'm almost positive that printer and the other one, we changed that zone.
What about where the Old Deli was, that's not 20,000 square feet?
The, the Deli is still allowed, it's still in the C1 zone.
It's still in the C1, correct.
Yeah, but you can still do that.
But you're not in the overlay.
Huh?
But you're not in the overlay.
The Deli, I believe, is over 40,000 square feet.
Correct, yes.
So it, it wouldn't even be affected.
If it's over 40,000, it would be affected.
Yeah.
If it's over 40,000, it's already permitted use.
But you wouldn't get the, you wouldn't get the additional density, though.
No, you wouldn't get the additional density, no. Okay, so how did the, uh, how did the rest of the board members feel about, about Jen's comments? Should I, should I remove that and, or, uh, ask for other properties to be included?
Which other properties would you want included?
I, I'm, I'm just tossing it out there, I, I have nothing, nothing in mind, I just, you know, want your guys' ideas.
I, I'm kind of feeling like Jen is feeling, I don't think we should pull it down into that real residential area on First, up to First Street.
Okay. So I'll, I'll remove that, uh, I'll remove that part? You want, you want me to take that comment out?
I would, yes.
Which comment are you taking out, Sean?
The desire to include all the C1 and C2 zone, instead of doing a overlay to just change the code.
I think it's number five, Eileen.
Yeah, I got it.
We can leave it that way and in the future, if we find issues, or if some property owners come to us, they could always a-ask to be included or have the zone changed or something like that. It's, it's not like a, it's not like it's gonna fall off the edge of the world if it's not included right now. No? Okay, so what I'll do is I'll remove that. I'll still ask, I'll still, uh, do you think we should, I should leave in there to contact the town of Cortlandt in Peachville to see if they use overlays?
I'd like that.
I'd like that, I don't think it would hurt to, to find out what our neighbors are doing.
So I'll remove all comments at number five except for the, uh, oh, one other thing I had written in there, uh, about the properties along Broadway and Blakely Avenue. Do you think they should be included in a C1, C2 zone? David, are the, uh, Broadway and Blakely Avenue, were they included in the C1, C2 right now or no? I forgot. No, that's all M1, huh?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because that, that was a comment that, that somebody had, was to include portions of Blakely Avenue.
Right, the southerly side of Blakely is R10 and the northerly side is M1.
Okay. All the way down, all the way down to Greentown Road?
You know, I'm not, I'm not really sure, and I, I don't have the full map with me.
Okay. Well, there's no, there's no other structures on Greentown Road. I mean, um, there's no structures past Greentown Road, because there's a lake and everything, that's a, that's, that is M1, we were gonna change the zoning for high-density housing there. All right, so I'll get rid of everything except contact the city of Peachville and the town of Cortlandt.
Right, or surrounding areas. You've got.
They are surrounding areas.
They what?
They are surrounding areas, the town of Cortlandt.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, you mentioned Briar Cliff, you mentioned Chappaqua. I mean, small villages, Crowton, um.
Crowton is a, part of the town of Cortlandt too, they.
But there's a village of Crowton.
Yeah, I'll, I'll include the village of Crowton too. I, I have an issue going too far south or too far north, because there are different types of communities. They're larger communities, they have different access to waterways. I just try, try to keep like the 10 square miles around us, you know?
Okay.
Uh, the other, so, all right, I'll change all of that. The other thing was the areas of agreement. Does anybody have any issues with the agreement, uh, section? So we didn't have a problem with, uh, increasing the lot coverage. However, it must conform to New York State, uh, Stormwater Manager Program. So we didn't have an issue with setbacks, as long as they are in line with adjacent structures. Didn't have a problem with the building height. Didn't have an issue with reducing the lot size from 40,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet for residential development. We use the development guidelines, but also include New York's, uh, New York State's, uh, smart, smart streets that they came up with a few years ago. I don't know if you guys, uh, ever, ever saw anything about that. And we didn't have an issue with changing the M1 zone on the north side of Albany Post Road to the C1, C2 zone. How about that? You guys in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Alright with that? So what I'm gonna do is on the last statement, because like I said, it was based on the other, uh, legislation, proposed legislation, I said we weren't gonna recommend the changes. However, what I, the way I'm gonna read it, as if, I'm gonna say, if the stipulations or the, uh, if the concerns raised in the memo are satisfied, that the planning board would recommend the adoption of the legislation as written. Do you guys agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I, I'll just write in this, like I said, that our, if our concerns are addressed satisfactorily, or, uh, it's, I'll word it somehow. I don't wanna, I don't wanna review it again. What I'm gonna do is, um, I'll make the changes and send them out to you guys. I'm not gonna wait for the next meeting, next planning board meeting. I'll send it out to you. If you guys, uh, have any questions or comments, I'll reamend it and I'll send it out to you again. I would like to have it done by the next workshop meeting or at least the next village meeting. All right, I believe the next workshop meeting is on Tuesday. Uh, the village board meeting is a week after that. Okay?
Hey, Sean?
Yes, sir?
So, um, so the property that's M1 on Blakely and, 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 um, no, it can't be.
The M1?
That, that would be changed to C2?
No, the M1 zone on Albany Post Road from, uh, White Street, all the way up to the Steel Bridge, basically.
In blue there.
From M1 to C2.
Okay, so they, where the Griffin property is on Broadway and Blakely, that wouldn't be changed?
No, no. No, that stays M1. The only part of the M1 zone that's changed is, is the part specifically listed on the drawing, which is from White Street, almost all the way up to the Steel Bridge.
Isn't it in blue?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's the only M1 that would be changed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you guys agree with that? Do you have any input on that, Mr. Cook? Is there something that you guys would like to see, or?
Uh, no, I'm just, uh, concerned about giving, uh, the property at White Street and Albany Post Road any additional, uh, abilities to make something that would be not as desirable.
That, that's included in the overlay. And the White Street Albany Post Road, it would have to abide by the steep slopes and he's way below the 20,000 square feet, that is the flat portion. So I don't think that, although it would be included in the zone, I don't believe he would be able to meet the as-of-right stipulations of the amended code.
Okay, good.
Did you agree with that, Mr. Stolman, or David?
I, I do, Sean, I do, yep.
What property is that?
He's talking about the old gas station across from Selix that built the road and took down the top and started filling in and, uh, they, they've been, they should stop work order, they're in court, it was adjourned. So there's, they've been told not to do that for many, many times and as he has done with his other properties, he feels that he can do what he wants, so.
Right, okay.
Hopefully, you know, hopefully that has been remedied. Although I did see a small front-end loader up on the hill again today. Actually, the other day, and, uh, there's a little Bobcat front-end loader that's parked on the hill right now next to the states. So he was obviously moving something up there. There's no reason to park a Bobcat on a hill with a, with a bucket unless you're gonna use it.
Dental, well, material up there.
He's probably moving his stuff back and forth. Yeah. And I did go over there and look at it and the entranceway to the book, uh, the entranceway to the, uh, uh, the driveway to the stone building, it looks like he dumped some ashes or something back there. It looked like there was ash that was in the fill, like, like you took down a burned-down house or something, but. But anyway, that's for a different discussion. So if nobody has anything to add to the, uh, reply, do, how do you feel about it, Mr. Stolman?
You know, I, I think these are good comments and I want to thank you for your.
Okay, if there's nothing else, uh, at the end of the meeting, if Jen and Stephanie could stay on and Marcus for a couple minutes?
Sure.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll, uh, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right? Thanks a lot.
Take care all, be well.
You too. Thanks, Chris, for you.